Start time for the start time for that resolution.
So you could.
All right, let's bring the city council meeting for June 11, 2024 to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Carter.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Present.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Present.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember Hubler. Councilmember McLehman's.
Present.
Councilmember Roach.
He's there.
Got his hand up.
I can make. I can make a motion to.
Microphone on.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Hubler from this evening's council meeting.
Second.
All in favor.
I'm here.
Okay. Thanks. All in favor of excusing Councilmember Hubler from tonight, please say aye.
Aye.
Suppose.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we have one agenda modification and two presentations tonight. A modification would be to add AB 24-72, motion M 24-72 to tonight's public safety issues. Is there a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to add that agenda bill.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Suppose.
Aye.
Good. Now for our first presentation, I'll turn the floor over to Chief Parkinson, East Pierce Fire and Rescue. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Council. Am I on here?
You're. Sounds like a.
Presentation to pull up. For those of you who I haven't met before, I'm John Parkinson, the Fire Chief of East Pierce Fire and Rescue. If I have met you before, hello again.
Hello.
Public Safety Committee, you saw me an hour ago. So, once we get presentation, I will talk fast. I know you have other people who need to speak and other business to do, and they didn't come here to hear me. So, so if I talk fast, it's intentional. All right, so the presentation that you see up on the screen, and I believe you probably also have this in your packet, but if not, I'm just going to take you through who East Pierce Fire and Rescue is, what we've been working on over the last year, and where we're headed for the remainder of the year. If you're not familiar with us, you've got a map up on screen which shows our service area. So that's the cities of Milton, Edgewood, Sumner, Bonnie Lake. We completely encircle Lake Taps, all of the Prairie Ridge communities, Tahale, which I'm sure you're all aware of, but over 10,000 residents out there now. We serve the town of South Prairie by contract. We go all the way to the city limits of Buckley, and then we head south and completely encircle Wilkson Carbonado, past Fairfax to the Mauch entrance to the National Park. Said a different way, we have addresses on the west side of I-5, and we go out to the base of Mount Rainier. So, small service area is my point. In that service area, 100,000 residents plus, 153 square miles of coverage that we have to provide each year. In 2023, we responded to just over 12,500 incidents. Most incidents that we go to require more than one unit because they require multiple personnel. So that means last year, over 30,000 unit responses occurred throughout our service area. Said a different way, that's around 85 emergency units going down the roadways day in and day out. As far as governance, just like you have a city council, we're governed under RCW 52, which appoints fire commissioners to govern the district. We have seven of those. We had a vacancy due to the death of Mike Cathy. That's being replaced with one of your formal councilmen, Justin Evans. He'll be sworn in next Tuesday, so he'll round out our board. Our Board of Fire Commissioners are elected to six-year terms, and just like you, they set policy for the district and also adopt budget. Speaking of budget, you see a pie chart up on the screen. This really represents the revenues that we bring in through property taxes. That property taxes generate 85% of our revenue each year. They're broken down into three levies right now, our fire levy, our EMS levy, and our bond levy. The fire levy being the largest portion of that, followed by the EMS levy, and then the bond levy, which will eventually pay off once our capital facilities projects wrap up in the mid 2030s. In total, right now, taxpayers are paying $1.63 per thousand. You'll see a note at the bottom of the screen that says that is the lowest combined tax levy rate of any Pierce County Fire District. Second place is really not close to us. So we're very proud to be able to provide the service that we can at what we see as a good value for our taxpayers. Next slide just shows a breakout of our operating budget for 2024. We're currently just over $46.3 million to operate the district. It's broken down into five different functional cost centers, administration, EMS, logistics, prevention. And then our largest area of the budget is operations, so that's our boots on the ground. We are primarily people, so 85% of our budget typically year over year is going to be wages and benefits of personnel, the remainder being supplies and services. So how we provide service day in and day out, currently in the 2024 budget, we have 194 employees. They currently, in addition to administrative functions, then the boots on the ground work out of seven fire stations. So 24/7/365, we deploy six engine companies, a ladder truck, four medic units, a battalion chief, and a medical services officer who are on duty at all times. That means at minimum, we always have 31 personnel on duty. In the city of Bonnie Lake, there's always six on duty at minimum. Starting next month, we'll be deploying some additional medic units. One of those will be based out of Bonnie Lake, so you'll have some improved service levels when it comes to emergency transport. And then in early 2025, we expect to open our new fire station out in Tahale, so that'll take us to eight fire stations. That also will provide some relief to our Bonnie Lake units that are currently working as the second-in unit for that community. So as far as 2023 stats go, and the numbers that you're looking at on the screen are specific to the city limits of incidents that occurred within Bonnie Lake. So last year, we responded to 2,568 incidents within the city compared to the just over 12,500 throughout the district. And then unit responses, again, it takes more than one unit typically to handle emergencies. So just shy of 6,000 unit responses occurred within the city last year. So that means over 16 times each day, we have emergency vehicles going across city roadways. The pie chart that you see next just shows a breakout by call type for the National Fire Incident Reporting System that we have to report to, and I'll just explain what you're looking at. The big piece of the pie chart there where it says 74.9%, that represents medical calls. So typically, three out of every four emergencies that we go on are going to be medically based. About two-thirds of the people that we go to see will end up being transported to the hospital. From there, the other big percentages, service-related calls, good-intent calls, and false alarms make up the other large percentages in there. And then from there, we go down into the much smaller percentages, which are things like fire hazardous materials incidents. As far as hour of the day, and again, these are specific to what goes on in the city of Bonnie Lake. So the chart that you're looking at starts at midnight and goes by hour until 11 o'clock the next day. So, and what we typically see across the fire service, and the same happens within our district, is that about two-thirds of incidents occur during daytime hours, and then overnight time hours as people go to sleep, things tend to quiet down a bit. You'll see the same thing occurs within the city, is that somewhere around seven or eight, as people start getting up and moving around town, we see our incident volume pick up, and then it tends to trail back off around 8:00, 9:00 each night. As far as day of the week goes, even though it looks like there's some peaks and valleys, for the most part, the city's fairly even. In other words, we're going to run in the mid 300s each day. Tuesday happened to be your busiest day last year with Sunday coming in as your low day. Depends on which city we're in, it's usually a little bit different. But again, most days are fairly normal for us as far as it's pretty flat across the year. As far as travel time, so once we're on the road, how long it takes us to set the parking brake in front of the emergency scene, on average, or 50% of the time, we're going to be there in 4 minutes and 25 seconds. At the 90th percentile, or 90% of the time, we'll be there in 7 minutes and 47 seconds or faster. As far as major milestones for the district in the last year, number of things. First off, we had several large recruiting classes of new firefighters. Those personnel were hired for a number of reasons, one being attrition as folks start to retire, but also targeted hiring to open up a new fire station in Milton, to be able to have the staff or the station out in Tahale, as well as open those additional medic units I spoke about earlier. But in total, we had three classes in the last year, a class of 12, a class of 14, and we currently have a class of 15 wrapping up academy right now. So, big influx of personnel over the last few years. We completed our first capital facilities project, so the first new fire station we've had in some time in Edgewood. If you had ever been by that station, it was built when Harry Truman was the president, so it was due for replacement. We were able to do a complete remodel and staff for the first time our Milton Fire Station. And again, I know that those, talking about an Edgewood or a Milton Fire Station feels like it's a ways away. As those areas get busy, what happens is then they draw upon Sumner. Sumner's a busy area. As Sumner gets busy, it draws upon Bonnie Lake. So as we make system improvements anywhere, it helps keep your units in town more often. So as I said, we opened up our Milton Fire Station. The next thing on the list there is that we completed our financial and accountability audit of 2022, received clean audit status from the State Auditor's Office. We broke ground on our Tahale Fire Station. If you happen by that site, it's about halfway complete right now, so they're wrapping up the framing portion. And while it was a 2024 item, back in April, voters did approve Proposition 1, which restored our fire levy back to its statutory limit. So looking forward, where we're headed for the remainder of the year, we've got several fire stations still in various states of construction. So our headquarters station here in Bonnie Lake across the street, and our station off West Lake Tap, Station 114, are both due to be complete in early September. So we expect to be moved into both of those within a month or so after completion. And then we have our Tahale Station, then we have a Prairie Ridge Station, which should be out to bid here any day, and then breaking ground on it later this summer. We also have several other facilities which were not funded as a part of our bond project or bond approval back in 2018. So the stations that you see up on screen are still items that we're working on funding for. It's the goal of the board is to not be back out to bond ever again, to come up with ways to fund these projects on their own. So that's our Milton Fire Station. Sumner Fire Station needs a substantial remodel. Our Foothills Fire Station, which is out on 234th, basically at the eastern edge of the city, just outside of city limits, needs to be replaced. And then we have a serious need for a fleet maintenance facility, which we don't have today, as well as a training facility. Few years ago, I presented you with our strategic plan that ran from 2021 through 2025. Staff's done a ton of work on that, and we're actually going to complete the plan in 2024. So we're midway through an update process with Burke Consulting. So next year, I'll be bringing you the 2025 through 29 strategic plan to see what we're working on. And then as last, housekeeping items for the remainder of the year, we'll be working on our 2025 budget all summer and adopting it in the fall, and then we'll go through our 2023 auditing process. So as always, if you're interested in information on what's going on, we send a newsletter out to the community each quarter. That should be in mailboxes this week. We're on social media all over the place. If that's your thing, it's not mine. I'm not a social media person. But if you're interested in following incidents, we have Pulse Point, which is there on the bottom. You can follow everywhere that we're going throughout the day, as well as a bunch of information on our website. That's my contact information. If you ever need me, you know where to find me. But if there's any questions I can answer, happy to do so.
And look like it.
None. All right. Well, thank you again, and I'll see you in the future.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. All right. Now move on to our second presentation item of the night, Mr. Sullivan.
I'll just, I'll stand up here, so follow, Chief. I'm Jason Sullivan, your interim Public Services Director. Tonight, we wanted to brief the city council on some updates to the downtown and midtown parks. As you know, we were kind of running forward with this project, and in early February, March, there was a discussion about would it be possible to expand the midtown park to accommodate more sports fields by relocating some of the proposed elements over to the downtown area for a downtown park. Tonight, you're going to see a bubble diagram. We want to make sure that council was okay with the direction that we're moving forward with before we spent money to come into final designs. We'll also kind of go over next steps as well. So here is the updated layout for Midtown Park. We are proposing, as part of the parks plan, to change the name from Midtown Park, which doesn't really identify it, to the Plateau Sports Complex, because now all of the improvements at the park are really targeted at providing access to different sporting facilities or venues. We kept the pickleball courts, the basketball courts, the tennis court, the covered courts. The disc golf is still there. The BMX bike trail is there, and so is the pump track. But we were also able to expand the park and add two additional fields. They will be proposed to be basically copies of what we have over at Allen York Park as Field Five, and they're arranged so that you would have four, you could have four baseball tournaments going on with bleachers and dugouts, as well for soccer games, you know, whichever field configuration you're using. But you could have tournament play with having four fields kind of connected with an internal walkway where there's a restroom facility in that area, as long as, as well as a small concessionaire stand, really getting to that council decision or direction to provide kind of a Class A sporting venue here in the city to attract not just practice, but also league games and tournaments. This would give us really the ability to host four tournament or four games simultaneously on those fields, right in the kind of heart of our center, our midtown center, which is why we've kind of renamed it as the Plateau Sports Complex.
Nice, just a quick, very fine question. I see the four sports fields, and then obviously the green example there. Is that saying that Field Four is going to look like that, or all four fields will look?
All four fields will look that way.
Okay. So that looks multipurpose?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would be, it would be, it would be designed just like Field Five, so you could do baseball, or make sure it also can support softball, football, lacrosse, and soccer.
Okay.
And you could have four games in one of those sports occurring simultaneously.
Okay.
Then to support the things that we took out of Midtown Park, the decision was really talked about, how could we use some of the downtown area to develop a kind of a downtown park that begins to play off the civic nature we have down here? Already in downtown, you have the Public Safety Building, you have the new fire station, which is the headquarters station, you have the library, you also have the Justice Municipal Center. So the thought here would be that we would bring the community center over and put it right off of Main Street. That community center would also be able to serve as a senior center and have two indoor basketball courts. The playground, the splash park that were envisioned for the Midtown Park would be moved over here to downtown. The existing community garden you'll see on the screen is exactly where it is now. So we kind of built around that as well, and also the existing surface parking lot, so we don't lose investments in those areas already. As I mentioned last week, we did propose to add the Veterans Memorial here versus at the corner of 410 and Main Street, that we could be developing. This area here, while it's colored green, is really, there's been a desire to look at bringing other commercial uses into the area, and that pad could be used for other commercial uses, whether it's residential, or mixed use, or restaurants, or shopping. But it creates kind of that pad area, and then another dog park for this area, a kind of a quiet area. You'll notice there that the Lions for Kids House is in that quiet kind of landscaped area. That the ideal is, if, when we move that, we would move it into the community center, and it would stay there until the community center opened up, and they could then become a tenant in the community center. It's, the park is designed in downtown with this kind of plaza. The plaza's all grass, so that you could move forward with kind of implementing this vision quicker, so you could grass the whole area, plant the trees for a lower cost. And then as you need, as you have funding and the ability to, you can add the different elements in without having to completely rip up our things other than grass. The nice one advantage we do have for development in downtown is years ago, the council built a regional stormwater facility. So we're able to take the stormwater for these improvements and direct it to a downtown, downtown stormwater pond, lowering the cost to develop these projects, because that stormwater project has already been taken place.
A question. Can you just, my brain is not computing, like where is the library and the?
Libraries are here.
Okay.
Justice Municipal Center.
Thank you.
As part of this proposal, the current street here, which is, I think, 86th, would be extended, and the current 87th would be partially closed to kind of create this slower through-street versus a straight shot, and that creates more space to open up that area for park development.
It's all that way.
From about the Lions Kids Clubhouse down, down to the city. This would allow, you know, for the work that we're doing with the police department, as we look at how the police department, the Public Safety Building gets reused. That's why we left the north half all alone, and we'll bring back a plan of how that looks like it would possibly lay out, also providing for some of that commercial end users as well. And so kind of, we're, this is, we had the kind of consultants throw some kind of the pretty pictures up as well, just for some character elements, so you can see, you know, kind of a playground area, the splash park, a little dog park. This is what they mean by the quiet area, just an area that's treeed, you know, solace that backs up to the community garden, and also provides a buffer between the community garden and the neighborhood, and also between the neighborhood and the Veterans Memorial. And the thought would be, if we move forward with this, if the plan were to be approved as part of the parks plan update, we would then reach out to the Veterans Memorial Committee, the 5013C, and begin to have renewed conversations about this site. As the current site, we don't actually own, and it's partly 410 right away, and it's kind of down in a hole. This is a site that we could probably move forward with in a much quicker fashion than over there. So this is the graphic, if you've been on the city council for a while, that I keep bringing back, just to show how we are adding sporting facilities through this plan to the city of Bonnie Lake. It's been one of the kind of battle cries of the park plan. One of the things that we've heard is we need to provide sporting facilities for a number of good reasons. As part of this plan, we're adding two additional multi-sport fields at Allen York Park, or I'm sorry, at Bonnie Lake Plateau Sport Complex, bringing in the total to four. It was originally only two. We would still add a fifth one over at Allen York Park where Field Four is. We have the Reed property that we're working with, with MRAC, and then we'd have two new indoor basketball courts over at the downtown park, and still at the midtown, at the, sorry, the sports complex, you would have disc golf, BMX, pump track, basketball, pickleball, tennis, so that, you know, you have a wide range of sporting activities, include the walking trails as well. So kind of next steps, we did submit the draft document that we had prepared earlier to the Department of Commerce for their 60-day review period. We're looking for feedback from the council tonight, so that we can finalize the draft of the Parks Trails and Open Space Plan by the end of the month. We hope to then begin our CIPA and public commenting periods right after the Fourth of July, with Planning Commission public hearings at the end of the month, and council adoption on August 13. I realize that when I put this out, I forgot that the August 6th workshop was canceled for National Night Out, so I apologize. We would just come straight to city council then on the 13th of August. The reason we're trying to hit the 13th of August deadline is we need to get the parks plan into RCO with, along with our certification documents in August, so that we can be ready to apply for grants in the fall. And one of the grants that we're trying to apply for is the boat trailer parking lot grant. There's a grant for building boat facilities, and we want to apply for that grant application this fall to support that project that we're currently doing a design effort on. With that, I can answer any questions, take any feedback. This has been an iterative process, and I appreciate all the council's willingness to let us play with things and move things around. Hopefully, we're getting closer to the vision that the council kind of has for the project areas.
I would say thank you. You did a great job putting this together. I think this is much closer to what I think the council as a whole wants to see. So thank you for that. Then I think I might have heard Councilmember Roach.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, Jason, thank you for all the work on that. I just had a recommendation on the, if we're naming it, I'd like to request that we do Bonnie Lake Sports Complex. Since the citizens of Bonnie Lake are paying for it, we can have them promote our city.
We can, we can do that. I've gotten lots of nods on this site. So when it comes back, it'll just say Bonnie Lake Sports Complex.
Perfect.
That's for Baldwin.
Is there a reason for the switch from the Spray Park from the Bonnie Lake Sports Complex to then the downtown area?
The thought was, in the original plan, there's also one proposed for Cedar View Park, which is right across the street. So in that area, there would be, kind of, there would have been two spray parks, and there would have been none on this side of town, so sort of some, you know, spreading it out among the community. And two, it just took up space that we needed to get that fourth ball field in.
I guess the reason why I'm asking is because as a mother of multiple aged children, you know, when my kids are playing sports, there's kind of like nothing I can do with my little kids.
We do plan on putting a small playground.
Okay.
By the, like we're doing over.
You gotta have your eyeballs on the small ones.
A small play area where you could have, yes, I agree. I had one son that was playing baseball, and then one son.
Oh, yeah.
I was like, you need to go do something, rock over there, go climb it.
Like a rock that's right here.
Yeah, I understand it. Yeah. So, yeah, there's a, there would be a smaller playground that would support the field, so that kids who aren't participating in the sports would still have something to do while their brother or sister.
But like in a closer vicinity?
Yeah, right up next to it. I think, I can have it, but yeah, it's kind of right off one of the fields.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm, I'm really impressed. Thank you so much for all the work that you've done. Just appreciate you for that, and you've literally added the sports fields where we need it, and also adding, changing Ballpark Four at Allen York Park from just basically a softball field, making it another multi-field that can also be used for softball. So I think that'll be excellent, and then plus all the parking that you've figured out for boat launch and all that. So excellent work. Thank you.
That's my requirement.
Thank you very much. Good talk.
And the fact that we can kind of stick within budget, because by placing the downtown park area, you know, and putting in all the green, so that we can kind of add as we get the funding, or as we get people who want to sponsor something, you know, I think that's amazing, too, that we can actually almost immediately have something for people to see that we're working towards something. And I think that will help garner community support as well, that they realize that we're actually trying to give them what they've asked for for years in a shorter period of time rather than 20 years. Thank you.
We'll serve as the North Star. Build them out as we have. We'll know where things are going, so we don't take things away that we need without understanding all the, all the relationships between the.
That's Mary Davis.
Yeah, and I also just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Great work. Appreciate it, all the effort you put into this, and I do appreciate the downtown area moving us forward with a plan to get that Veterans Memorial in there. It's one of the first parts, and Phase One, I think, was really important to a lot of people in the community. So I appreciate you making those accommodations in there.
Again, I will, there's a, there's a big team behind me helping with this, and I will pass that on. I'm just kind of intentionally sometimes outspoken for everybody, but there's a huge team. I will let them know as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, it looks like there's no public hearings, so we'll go on to citizen comments. This is your time to address the council on city business. The city will now enable the video and microphone for those attending virtually. You will need to turn on your video microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen or heard. We will start with those who are here in person and move to the virtual comments afterwards. You have five minutes. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello. See a couple new faces on council, so I'll just introduce myself real quick. My name is Jasmine Tran, and I'm the Regional Services Manager supporting the Sumner Bonnie Lake Buckley Libraries of the Pierce County Library System, and I'm here to talk about summer reading. The summer reading program is in full swing. Our region's librarians have been visiting over 2,000 people in schools and other community organizations to let them know what's going on in their library this summer. Like tonight, our youth services librarian is attending the Donald Eisman's Parent Literacy Night, promoting summer reading. We invite people of all ages to come in and get a reading log to participate. The summer reading program is an incentive to build reading confidence for new readers, to help prevent the summer slide that is sometimes seen in reading skills for our kids, and to encourage a lifelong love of reading for all ages. I encourage anyone here to participate as well. I've brought adult reading logs, if anyone is interested. The summer reading program runs from June 1st to August 31st. As part of the summer reading program, the Bonnie Lake Library is holding a kickoff party on Friday, June 21st, from 12 to 4, after school gets out for the summer. Everyone is welcome to drop in. We'll have performances by a magician at 12:30 and 2:00, activities for all ages, refreshments, and a pop-up book sale from the Friends of the Library. Anyone who hasn't gotten their reading log. Anyone who hasn't gotten their reading log can also get started that day. I hope to see you at the summer reading kickoff party.
Awesome, thank you. What else?
Council Mayor, I'm past Councilmember Dan Decker, live at 204 170 Street East, Bonnie Lake. We, the people here, say, now say, Mayor, wow. You're just perfect, aren't you? Me, I'm not. Mayor, concerning Councilmember Carrie Hubler and her need for transparency. Because she screamed she wanted transparency, off to the facts we go. Here's some of her transparency she forgot to mention, maybe on purpose. As Carrie Brannick, she got to visit the following courts. Eleven of them, and how many times in each, I don't know, but I can find out if you like. As Carrie Izzy, she seemed not to have any current court records in Washington. Then she did have, excuse me, then she did live in Shady, Oregon as Carrie Izzy or Carrie Brannick. So many names she goes by. Then she did live in Sandy, Oregon as Carrie Izzy or Carrie Brannick. So many names. Don't forget the transparency trip she got to take in handcuffs from Ridgefield, Washington to Tillamook County in Oregon. As Carrie Davenport, she made it to Gray's Harbor County Superior Court twice. It seems because she had a reputation that she willfully forgot to be, forgot to be transparent about. I believe she lacks honesty. She speaks about how terrible others are and how wonderful she is. If you recall, she spoke about the mayor, when she was finished, she said, but I am the perfect mayor. Because she thinks she can gaslight the people and still get favors from them. I notice because she is well-versed in how easy it is to fool people, it becomes natural for her. Now, what's her name? Yes, Carrie Izzy, Carrie whatever. Because we want to believe the best in her, she fools people and takes advantage. It's easy to fool people, but very difficult to convince some people they have been fooled. And I believe a few council members are having difficulty realizing that she has fooled you. Because she counts on the above facts, she fools and gaslights everyone. Everything I have to say is true because I have the official court records in black and white from the courts. Because of transparency, she is now well-known. She is known as a hypocrite. I hope she stays on the council. I sincerely do hope she stays on the council. I have years of transparency about her to share with the voters. As is shocking even to me, but she is also very despicable in the things that she says and does. Thank you, council. Just remember, it's easy to fool people, but very difficult to convince people they have been fooled. Think real hard about that, please, council, because she's a pro. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so you know one will now start, those that are virtual. You have five minutes, state your name and address for the record, please. Okay. See anybody coming on there? The city will now disable all video and microphones for those attending virtually. We have no correspondence. Next will be committee reports. Finance Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance Committee met this evening, June 11th, of course, at 5:00 PM upstairs, second floor, public is always invited. Our items of business included personnel update by Brian Sandler. If you need the details to that, he wrote up a nice little scenario there. We mainly have new workers coming on board, almost a full staff in the city-wise, and a lot of the seasonal hires that are the actual seasonal, seasonal hires, not the temporary ones that are ones that we're hiring forever supposedly. Also, the recreational budget report. We had the Parks and Rec manager over there give us a little synopsis. We're trying to, you know, keep an eye on the figures and what they're doing over there to make sure they're staying within the criteria that the council laid out. Hopefully, that, that'll all work out in the end, but we just wanted to make sure to keep that on the top of the pile. Also, a motion for establishing a fleet division. That'll be coming forward as a full council issue here in the future. Administration is still working out some details on that reorg because it impacts some employees. So they're having to work out those positional with the union and non-union folks. So you may or may not see that in the next meeting, but it'll probably come forward at some point in time for your consideration. And that was our items of business that evening.
Thank you. Move on to Community Development Committee, please.
Yes, we did meet last week. We had, originally, we had, we canceled. We, we had a modified agenda because we also met with our Joint Advisory Committee, which is with the Sumner Water Treatment Plant. So we had our first JAC meeting with the Sumner City Council, as well as Bonnie Lake City Council and all of the administrators down there at the water treatment plant to go over our pre-treatment program that we're now required to do for the water system. Then we met at 5:30 instead of 5:00 and just went over the, did a debrief on, on our meeting with the Joint Advisory Committee. So that was our CDC meeting for last week. Next week, our CDC meeting on June 18th has been canceled as council will be at the AWC conference for the week. And so our next meeting will be July 2nd at 5:00 PM upstairs on the second floor. We do encourage the public to attend. You can attend virtually or in person. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Public Safety Committee, please.
My little thing here. Hello, everyone. The Public Safety Committee met today, just for your record keeping. The next meeting is July 9th, which is the second Tuesday of July at 3:30. The East Pierce Fire Report, he just gave it, so I'm not going to repeat what he said. And then the Bonnie Lake Police Department Report. So I'm going to try my best to explain this as much as possible. But due to the changes to the drug possession law that had to do with the Blake decision, for anybody that's familiar with that. And that's the one that made drug possession legal originally. But because it, there have, have been some changes to the law, some data is now showing that it's starting to come back up as far as drug charges go. So it's, we're now able to see that we're, at the time, we were not able to. It looked like there was nothing going on in that world, but we know that there was. And we also asked for data on the amount of Narcan that gets administered. And Narcan is what reverses opioid overdose. It gives you an opportunity really to live when you're dying. And then we talked also about how the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department does have data on overdose deaths. So that might be something that we will be looking into. Also, Chief Berry is organizing for a FLOC, which is an acronym, representative to come give a presentation to the council and the public on the license plate readers. That has been proposed. Just kind of a description is, these will be 24 fixed cameras, have no audio, no face recognition, installed at intersections and covered by a two-year lease grant award. And so basically, someone's going to come and explain all of that to us to answer any questions or concerns that we might have with that. Also, there was vandalism at the skate park in which two persons were apprehended, so way to go. Also, a reminder to residents that online reporting is currently live and available to access. I accessed it myself. I literally searched up Bonnie Lake Police Department and I saw the link. I clicked on it and right below, there's a QR code and even a link to be able to report if you wanted to do that. Juvenile crime has nearly doubled from last year. Some things that we discussed as to why that might be and what some of the barriers might be is, I don't know if you knew this, public, but Raymond Hall, the juvenile detention center, is run by the Superior Court. And they do not accept juveniles unless it's a felony violent crime. And so be thinking about that in your next ballots when you're deciding who is going to be in charge there. Also, the prosecutor's office report came that, really neat, they worked with some high school students from Sumner and Bonnie Lake High School to create interest flyers for Rule Nine internships, which are third-year law students that basically get an opportunity to do more in their internship. But it's been hard to find an intern for that particular position. So they basically helped make flyers and everything like that. And then, did you want me to go into the AB 24-72 or shall we wait for them?
I think we're going to wait because.
Okay, that is all.
All right, thank you. I don't see any other reports. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt? So moved.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Roach.
The amended the council policy procedures. I just need clarification, was that changing the way we were replacing mayors? Was the conversation we had last week?
No, that was only for the agenda modification. So there, it removed the two classes of agenda modification, or agenda criteria. Now, there's only, if it comes out of a committee, Mr. Roach, it would just go to the full council issues if it's under full council. That way, there's no confusion of which committees it's been to and everything. It's just a, it doesn't change any of our procedures per se, it's just where it's listed, I guess.
Okay, great, all right, thanks for the clarification.
And just FYI, the issue with changing the policy for the, how you select a mayor if one were to leave. Councilmember Fullerton is working on that and it's being reviewed currently by the Deputy City Attorney. But it'll may come forth in the future.
Great, thanks.
All right, I believe we had a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we have four finance committee issues and three full council issues. The first item, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 2442, Resolution R 2442. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with RH2 to support the design of the senior center improvements.
Still moved? Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Councilmember McLeibens.
Yeah, so I had a couple of questions. Is, is ARC the same architecture firm we use for the Public Services Center?
Oh, A R C? Yes.
Did we select them or was that selected by RH2?
That was the subcontractor.
Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Yeah, so this is mainly procedural type stuff really in reality because of the state requirements behind the grant that we're receiving. So there's a lot of paperwork and everything has to be lined up in a specific fashion to prove that we're eligible for the grant, so.
See anyone else? Well, all those in favor, oh, sorry, Councilmember McLeibens.
Yeah, so I think I just would like to remind the public that ARC had some significant defects in the architecture for the Public Works facility that caused delays and extra money over, over the long run of the project. I'm concerned that they're, part of this, I think because of what Councilmember Swatman says, that this is mostly procedural and maybe insignificant. I still find that $89,000 for an architecture firm that struggled to execute the last time is, is, you know, I, I guess I, I want to move this forward because the seniors need to move it forward, so I will support it. But there's got to be better ways, maybe we can work with RH2 to maybe select a better candidate. I don't know how that works, I don't know what our sphere influence is there.
Did we take bids on that?
So, Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, this came off the city's small works roster, which is our, RH2 is one of our on-call consultants. And they selected A R C as their sub. I don't know how much authority we have to go down into the subcontracting level because our contract is with RH2, not, not A R C.
That's where Baldwin.
I understand that they selected the subcontractor, but is there a way to have a discussion of concern with RH2? Instead of just kind of saying like, it's totally fine?
I'm kind of, I'm kind of staring at the city attorney. I, I, I don't know how much, I mean, they're, they're definitely hearing this recording. So, you know, we can always point them to the council meeting regarding those conversations. I will say this is a much smaller scale project. It's, you know, as compared to the Public Works Center. And we will definitely have our maintenance staff as part of the ownership group and then also our building staff looking at it as well. But yeah, I just don't know how much we can kind of go down. And then how much, does that, how much does that impact the project moving forward if they have to go and try to find a new sub?
Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Yeah, I think Mr. Sullivan covered it there a little bit because it isn't like they're designing a bunch of new rooms and buildings and stuff forth. It's a very small-scale type of thing. It's, it's really a, to me, I hear that it's more of a paperwork kind of filling out the boxes effort than anything else.
That's where Baldwin.
I mean, I just think of, you know, my kids and I tell my kids, if there's something that they want to talk to me about that is a concern, then they can talk to me. It doesn't mean I'm, I'm going to change my mind. But I'm going to, I'm going to take their concern into consideration. So I just wonder like if there's a way for us to still communicate with them, not telling them that they have to change from ARC, but to say we had concerns previous and how can we avoid these concerns? Does that make sense?
Yes, and I can definitely relay that message from the city council to RH2.
Yeah, because I think that's a valid concern.
I, I can definitely relay that.
Or just refer to this recording.
Yep, I can definitely relay that message, that's, that is not a problem.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of Resolution R 24-42, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. Next issue, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 2450, Resolution 2450. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a contract services agreement with ACE Improvements to provide installation of flooring at the old Public Works Modular.
Still moved? Second?
Second.
Thank you. This again is an improvement that needed to be done prior to anyone moving into the modular building that over the, the old Public Works. So I think everybody knows where that is. The flooring is not satisfactory or safe in any way for the general public or anybody to really be around in there. So they're going to do this improvement. And I would just like to thank the mayor and administration for getting the historical society, hopefully, a little better space. I know it's far from where you need to be and far from a permanent space we'd love to see folks have. But this is a little small move to get you out of an aging building that's going to collapse on us at any moment, in my opinion. So that's a great thing. So again, appreciation to the staff to have that done it quick and as expedient as possible.
Okay. All those in favor of Resolution R 24-50, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Our next issue, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 2455, Resolution 2455. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a contractor services agreement with Veritex Contracting to provide installation of power services for security cameras at Allen York Park Ball Field Five.
Motion?
Still moved?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Yeah, this is pretty straightforward, of course, in my mind, because we have a huge public investment in the Ball Field Five and any.
Yeah, this is pretty straightforward, of course, in my mind, because we have a huge public investment in the Ball Field 5 and anything and everything that can be done to you know, catch anybody or dissuade hopefully any kind of vandalism or stuff forth that would go on down there. A lot of we will unfortunately probably suffer some at some point in time, but it's just like anything else. You gotta you put as many barriers in that you possibly can. This is definitely a tool for police and public and Public Works to be able to use. So it's a good thing. The explanation, they didn't have the quite power in the right. You know, it's it's the cameras are 120 volt and the lights are 480. So they needed to redo that a little bit. That's what it cost. There you go.
Any further discussion? All in favor of Resolution R 24-55, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. Next issue, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 2453, Motion M 2453. The council motion would be to authorize the purchase of a tire balancer and a tire mounting machine and authorizing the use of the ER and R ending fund balance to cover the additional costs of the equipment.
Is there a motion?
Still moved?
Second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussions? Oh, Councilmember McLeimans.
I'm trying to wrap my head around this. So we're making the claim that we're saving money because people won't be running around in the city. Right?
True. And it's not only in the city, but running down to other cities to get stuff done at dealerships, like Pualup and that kind of thing as well.
Yeah, but we still have to go get the tires, right?
No. So right now, the way the way it works is we only get tires when they need to be changed. So every day or whenever there's a need for a tire change. Because the police use specialized tires. We also have larger tires on our vehicles. We have to send someone to Fife to pick up the tires. If we had the only the our own equipment in-house, we would actually stock enough tires so that we only have to make one run when we get low as we do the work versus kind of just randomly when we need to get the jobs done or only picking up four tires at a time. So we'd actually have a stock at the Public Works Yard. The other part of this is it's, you know, also we have to have one person take someone to the place, drop off the car. Someone pick them up. So you have a lot of staff time involved during this kind of moving of cars and vehicles around. The other part of it is while yes, there is going to be a savings of, you know, $200 or $300, you know, as every time we have to change our own tires. Part of this money is coming from the building outfitting money, which was designed to put things in that facility, which is what they're for. The one big part of this is emergency preparedness. Right now, if there's a big snowstorm or you know, Lahar event, you know, or other emergency in which we lose power and we're relying on police vehicles and our public services vehicles. If we lose tires and the local shops aren't open because they don't have power or they don't have staffing, we have no way to put those vehicles back on the road. This would allow us to be self-sufficient. Our our facility is 100% generator powered. So no matter what's happening to the power grid and we would have tires stocked in-house, we would be able to keep our vehicles on the road for emergency response during those times when you can't rely necessarily on a business to do it. It's great when businesses are operating normally. But when you don't have those emergencies and you need to be self-reliant, this would give us that full ability to do it and also kind of quicker and more at a cheaper price long term.
Deputy Mayor Swatman?
Yeah, Mr. Sullivan, I think because tonight we're at the finance committee, we're talking about the, you know, emphasis on fleet management and so forth. So this kind of works into that, of course. And you meant your report, you said there's more than 140 vehicles or?
The the city currently has 172 vehicles, rolling stock vehicles between the police department, public services department, plus all the other departments, 114 pieces of equipment with a combined value of about $11 million. So we're really trying to take steps to manage that fleet in the most COX effective way for both kind of fiduciary responsibility to the city and the taxpayers, but also make sure that we're as prepared for emergencies as we can be. Because we don't know when those will strike. And so we're trying to get all that done in advance.
Yeah, you know, the logistics of moving those things around and stuff is really kind of difficult when you're dealing with outside agencies and especially when you're dealing with a police officer vehicle and you have to do certain things when you're maintaining that as opposed to regular vehicles. So I'd see this as a great option for the city. Hopefully they can definitely follow through with that. It makes, you know, it cheaper for the taxpayer to have it done internally in this particular case, so.
Councilmember Fullerton?
And we had a discussion on Monday and so we do have a facility enabled to be able to store all the tires that we need, plus we have additional two loner police cars so that the police can just literally drive in, pick up their loner, drive out while they're while you're repairing the tires. Plus, I think, what was it, about two years ago when we were getting ready to move into the new Public Works building? We approved for a lift. So that's all there. So it's kind of nice to have that equipment be used for what we purchased it for as well, besides just being able to get underneath and then do the repairs. So I'm a yes on this one.
Okay, making sure there's nobody else who needs to speak. Okay, all in favor of Motion M 24-53, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next issue, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 2442, Resolution R 2442. The council motion would be to authorize the judge to sign a memorandum of understanding with Consejo, the for behavioral health and community court liaison CPC, S U D, P T, A A C, effective June 10, 2024 through June 20, 2024.
Motion?
Still moved? Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes, and I think I think, did you say AB 2442, but I see 72. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I will continue, yes. Oh, okay, it's AB 24-72, M 24-72. But yeah, this is, we had an MOU, a memorandum of understanding with Rainier Recovery. That has been terminated due to a pending investigation. Luckily and wonderfully, our Bonny Lake Community Court cares about the quality that people seeking recovery are getting. And so I really, really appreciate that they caught this. The community court was made aware of some questionable practices that were very concerning to them that could compromise the forward motion of people seeking sobriety. And so this would authorize Judge Daniels the ability to sign an MOU with Consejo Counseling temporarily from June 10 to June 30, while they find a more permanent replacement for the next grant cycle, which begins July 1. And so that's what this is.
June, June 30? Okay.
Did I say that right?
No, because it says June 20 in the agenda.
Well, the grant cycle begins July 1, I believe.
Okay.
Oh, there you go, yes.
Perfect. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of Motion M 24-72, say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right. Next issue, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 2454, Motion M 2454. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a labor agreement with the police guild representing the law enforcement employees from January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2026.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Still moved?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of Motion M 24-54, say aye.
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 Opposed? Very good. Thank you. Next issue, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 2456, Resolution R 2456. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Sierra Santa Fe Corporation for the 2024 chip seal and seal coat project.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Still moved?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Councilmember McLeimans?
Yeah, I believe on page 250, there's not a stop bar at one of the side streets listed on Island. Oh, let's see, no stop bar on Rainier Drive East. I was wondering if that was intentional or whether I didn't, I was going to try to drive out there and see if there was a stop bar already on the road.
Sorry, do you mean 205? There's no 250. Why does it say?
Yeah, mine says 250.
Oh, but there's no page, there's no page 250 anyway, though.
Page, it doesn't exist. No wonder.
What?
Hack, it goes to 257.
Never mind.
Never mind.
I'm ahead.
Working ahead.
I'm on the mystery page.
He's on a different plane.
You can see mine says 231.
There you go.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor of Resolution R 24-56, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next issue, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 2457, Resolution R 2457. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with specialized pavement marking for the 2024 striping and pavement marking project.
Motion?
Moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Send you an email where where I think the stripe is missing.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor of Resolution R 24-57, say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right. Seeing no more business, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Mayor, can I make an announcement real quick?
Oh, yep. We're not adjourned. Stand by. Councilmember Roach?
All right. Thank you. So I just wanted to announce that I, you know, I think everyone knows that I accepted a job here a few weeks back. And I've now come to the realization that they're not compatible with my duties as a council member. And I don't feel I can put in the time that's required. So I want to announce that I will be stepping down and I'll make my last day on June 30 to help give the council some time to be able to prepare to make the replacement there. And just wanted to say thank you to Bonny Lake citizens who've supported me in this effort. And I also wanted to say I've enjoyed working with the mayor and council and staff. And just appreciate the good times. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Roach. Councilmember Baldwin?
Dan, I'm bummed. Just want to make sure you knew that. I did have a question, though, as far as like procedures are concerned. Are we even able to advertise a vacancy and like when someone is still in the position?
Should be able to.
I think we can advertise it. I would guess we should turn it over to the attorney.
If with Councilmember Roach's permission, we could certainly advertise it. I wouldn't want to have the deadline be until after the vacancy actually takes effect. Because in theory, Councilmember Roach could I guess you could accept his resignation effective that date. And if he changes his mind, then it puts the council in a strange situation. So but otherwise, you could also have everything ready to go and advertise starting July 1. Because then you would have, I was just trying to figure out the dates here, you would have until about October 1 to fill it. So interviews would happen after July 1, basically. That would be my recommendation.
Because we cannot
We can advertise before.
Because the vacancy doesn't occur until July 1.
Vacancy until there's actually a vacancy.
Exactly.
We'd have to wait. So that gives us three weeks then to before we can start interviewing.
Yeah, yeah. I would recommend that the that the opening doesn't close until after July 1.
Yeah.
Yeah, just for the council's knowledge, I mean, whatever works best as you're working. I'm amenable to that. So I can make the date earlier, whatever we need to do.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yeah, that's why I was asking because I know that Councilmember Roach, that's what he's saying is he's interested in whatever is going to be the easiest for us. So I guess that's the question that I have is is June 30 good or because it does, it does kind of like stop kind of the time right before we can interview candidates and things like that?
No, well, because we have A W C next week, right?
Right.
You know, I don't see why you wouldn't advertise openings now or something and then to close the at July, July 1?
Yeah.
And then you could start your interviewing process right after that.
Okay.
So, you know.
I would just couch it for advertising as the council anticipates having a vacancy
Yeah.
effective July 1.
I'm looking, next week is the 18th, which we start A W C. And there's the the next week after that's the 25th and then we're into July.
Okay.
Councilmember Roach, will you be able to attend the meeting on the 25th of June?
Is that our Tuesday night meeting?
It's a Tuesday night, yeah, because next week, the 18th, we have A W C with the conference. And then we have another, we have one more week. So I'm just wondering if we want to advertise the seat vacant before the 25th, if you're unable to attend the 25th as a council member or if we should go ahead, what does the council think if we should just go ahead and wait until July 2 would be the next Tuesday? So we could have I guess the applications do buy. My my concern is is that if we do on the 30th and that only gives people one day because technically I feel like we didn't advertise for a council seat until after the mayor, until after Councilmember Carter's seat was vacated and we couldn't do interviews for the mayor's seat until after his seat was vacated. So we couldn't even have a discussion about it the night of the workshop because he didn't resign until Wednesday instead of resigning on Tuesday night. So I'm just trying to figure out what would be the most productive date, I guess, for Councilmember Roach to turn in his resignation if we if we want more time.
Don't you have the workshop on July 2nd, right? Is that what it is?
Yeah, so I but I'm thinking
If we close it on July 1, then they're all available and July 2, you can review the applications and decide the process.
But we can't, we can't ask for applications for a seat that's not vacated.
Yeah, you can. You just said you could.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
I would just advertise it as the council is expected to have a vacancy starting July 1, if you would like to be considered for this, you know, appointment. So I think you could do it sooner because Councilmember Roach has given notice that he will be vacating. And I would ask that Councilmember Roach, would you please put that in an email to the clerk? So, thank you. So that's what I would do. And then assuming the vacancy is July 1, the council would have all summer and into the fall, September 28 would be the deadline to fill the seats. So you would have ample time to make that determination.
So we're not going to do interviews on July 2?
No.
If you want it.
You could if you wanted to.
Or you could do it July 11. Wait, no, July 9.
You'd probably want to, in my mind, take July 2. You'd have all of the available because you closed the closed the application on July 1, right? So then you'd have them all available on July 2 at the workshop. You could establish the process, make sure you're clear with how you wanted to do that moving forward and then go forward.
It takes me some time to get everything prepared also to give you guys all of the applications.
So a few weeks is better, is what you're saying.
Oh, okay, yeah. Albeit, I don't
Sadie?
Takes us hit print.
Yes. What what would you recommend, like if he resigned like on June 24 before the 25th meeting and then we can say we have a vacant seat? And we'll start taking applications. So then we have a week to take applications or two weeks or whatever and then we can close it on the 1st and then decide after that or?
I can, I can start advertising tomorrow afternoon. If he resigned on the 20, the 25th after the meeting, we could say that it closes on the 28. You guys, I could have everything ready like I normally would do. You guys, I could have everything ready like I normally would do, because that would be a Friday. You guys would have the weekend and Monday to review applications. And Tuesday, you, it's a workshop, so you could do interviews. And then the next week, you could appoint.
And, yeah, Councilmember Baldwin?
Just curious, I love that plan, by the way, Sadie. It sounds excellent. Do we want to give people the opportunity of two weekends to, you know, fill out applications? Or three weekends, I guess, is the question? Because right now, Sadie's proposal is two weekends. And then that third weekend, we would be reviewing the items. But I just, I think of people, you know, working people that apply for council, that would give them two weekends, but really like they would have just found out, right? Because Sadie said she can advertise tomorrow. Do we feel like people need a little bit more time?
Before, so.
But it doesn't, it's, it's rushed.
There's no reason, and I'm, I'm always on the side of, I don't, you know, I'd like more time, but that's fine. But it's a council member. We're not doing anything. We don't have business that we're conducting. It's a lot different than a mayor.
Yeah. Well, I mean, she's saying she can advertise, and then it would close on the 28th. So that's literally, that's like two weeks.
Well, okay, but, but working people, that doesn't mean two weeks. That means two weekends. That is what that means if you have a job, a full-time job.
So you want to close it on? One, two.
July 1.
Three. So you want to close it on July 5th then?
No, what he just said.
July 3rd?
Yeah, because then Sadie could have the opportunity to get packets together. We could get a chance to review it, you know, and things like that. And we don't have to do that. I just.
Well, I mean, then when would we do the interviews?
The 9th.
The 9th, the following week?
Okay, yeah. Would that give you more time also, Sadie? A little bit more relaxed, especially since we're all going to be gone next week?
It's not complex. All she does is have to hit print.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's, it's more involved than that, but.
Well, I don't know what's involved with that exactly, because we're taking applications online. And there, there's, there shouldn't be any nuance to that, in my opinion.
Okay, so then when do we want the resignation letter? It doesn't matter then, if he does it on the 30th, we're just going to open it?
Guess it doesn't matter.
And then close it on the 1st?
Just, yeah, so I think his date already is, is good. What do you think, Councilmember Roach?
I'm fine with whatever you decide.
Thank you for being amenable to moving all this stuff around. Actually, kind of, it's kind of weird to have that conversation.
Something going on over here.
Yeah, we got to huddle over here, okay? We have a lot of stuff coming up on the projected agenda that I'll let Jason speak to.
So I'll, I'll sit down, so it doesn't look weird. We have a, a ton of projects on the future agendas for July and August. You've got the Peak 410 Development Agreement coming forward so that they can break ground on a number of new buildings. We've got the Parks Plan coming forward in August. We've got Tarragon coming back in July as well. So as we move things around, we have to, you know, as we take those days for the council meeting. Right now, there's nothing on July 2nd. There's also a 5th Tuesday on July 30th, if we had that available to move things around too, as well.
We can always have a special council meeting too, at any point, because it's just councils.
Yeah, exactly. There's, there is that option that we could have a special meeting just to do this.
Councilmember Baldwin?
I would like to retract what I said then, due to new information. And so I like the idea of what Sadie originally said, or the potential proposal of the 30th of July.
Still think.
So, wait, the, the 30th of July, so taking, so adding a, a 5th Tuesday to July to have a, a council meeting, but not for interviews, because the interviews would be on the 2nd?
I think the proposal would be, the interviews would be on the 9th.
The 9th.
And then we would just shift everything from the 9th down. So that was, so that would put whatever was on the 9th on the 6th, you know, we just kind of shift everything down from there.
And then make an additional meeting on July 30th?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Um. I, I like Sadie's original idea, which would be that we do interviews on July 2nd.
Yes, that, that would work as well.
Okay, that, we're talking about two different options here?
Yeah, there's two different options.
Okay, I would support July 2nd. I'm so sorry for retracting what I said.
Councilmember McLemmons?
Like maybe with July 2nd or also the 8th? So, but I can do.
A new one, please.
I tried a new one. It didn't work very well.
Other, other than being remote, are you okay with doing interviews on the 2nd?
I just wanted to let council know.
Okay.
That's the next two weeks.
Is everyone else that's here okay with doing interviews on the 2nd? Okay, then I think we'll move forward with the 2nd.
All right.
Okay.
Excellent. Again, thank you, Councilmember Roach, for being so amenable to all of this.
Absolutely.
Very good.
You will be missed.
Not going too far. It's not like he's moving out of state.
Yep, I'll be here, but I, I have, I have full confidence that everyone on the council and the mayor have, have the city's best interest. So I'm happy with that.
Thank you. All right. With that, no further business. We're adjourned for real this time. Yeah.
I'd like to withdraw my earlier statement.
From the record.